International Airport Authority, regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, June 22, 2022, and it is approximately 3:06 PM. Madam Kirk, if you would please do roll call.
Please state your names for the record. Members from the city of Colton.
Frank Navarro.
Thank you. Members from the city of Loma Linda.
Dusty Rigsby.
Thank you. Member from the county of San Bernardino, 13th District. Don Ra. Thank you. Members from the city of Highland.
Penny Lowburn with alternate Larry McKellen in the audience.
Thank you. And members from the city of San Bernardino.
John Valdivia.
Fred Scherr.
Thank you. We have a call.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on closed session items, please?
We have no public comments.
Okay. At this time, we will adjourn our meeting to closed session, and we will reconvene shortly. Thank you. Okay. We will reconvene our meeting. And if I could ask our attorney to report out, please, on the closed session item.
Mr. Mayor, as to closed session item A or closed session C sub A, no reportable action was taken in closed session.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the open session, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the San Bernardino Airport International Airport Authority. And today is Wed- Wednesday, June 22.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. There it is. And it's approximately, it was a tough closed session, 3:35. And if I could have Mayor Valdivia lead us in the pledge.
All right. All rise. Ready, begin.
Our pledge is to supply the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Madam Kirk, any items to be added or deleted?
No items.
Thank you. Item F, conflict of interest, anybody wishing to disclose conflict of interest on any item on the agenda. Seeing none and hearing none, moving on to item G of the agenda, informational items. And for this, I will turn it over to our executive officer, Mr. Burrows.
Thank you, Mayor. And if it pleases the commission, I'd actually like Mr. Gibbs to take up item C first because we have a little thing to show you all. Mr. Gibbs, take us home here. Ms. Kassaris has a little token on this. So, Mark?
Thank you, Mike. Last month, we were very pleased to have the commission join us for a ribbon-cutting project that christened our new tank at the jet A fuel farm that's used to support your entire airport. So, the new 360,000 gallon tank is in use and doing its work. We're very pleased to see this get across the goal line, and we're very pleased to have everyone out and be part of this special moment. And with that, Ms. Kassaris has a great gift to share with everyone. There's a bunch of good-looking people in that picture.
Yes.
So, that is going to help support the airport for many years to come throughout its continued growth that you are all a very important part of.
That is outstanding work, Mark, you and staff, everybody involved in that project. Thank you very much. And thank you to the commissioners that were there on that day. So, now we can sell more fuel.
Well, they definitely are doing that, yeah. And I want to thank Supervisor Rao because she was on the ball and had a reso in hand day of, and I thought, oh, jeez, yeah, we've got to step up our game here. So, thank you for that. And it's happily displayed over there at Luxever. But please, the commission, we'll put it on display wherever you feel it's appropriate. Thank you for your investment.
Mr. President, I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Regarding the fuel farm, I want to commend the staff and the diligence and the focus to get it back online. It was never offline, however. We were not at full capacity, and as I understand it, we actually have two more landing spots for more additional build-out. So, great job. I remember reading your weekly reports when I first assumed the mayor's office and chair. I think we're at about 100,000 gallons maybe a week. And your latest report, we're at 510,000 gallons just this past week. So, I want to compliment our staff and also our grounds crew who take the time and are out there front lining, fueling up jets, and we appreciate the hard and earnest work. Thank you.
And thank you for your investment in this airport, by the way. As Mr. Cusino knows, that was not cheap, but it will pay for itself over time. So, thank you. I also want to acknowledge that Ms. Kassaris, Ms. Martinez there, did a whole lot of work coordinating that event. Did an amazing job, ladies. And it was full court press. Ms. Pritchett's go-to Dominique and team were also working on it. And of course, our wonderful Luxever staff on setup, and they're taking good care of it. They're very, very proud of it. So, thank you, commissioners. The other item corresponds with one that is actually on your consent calendar that many commissioners or some have had questions about, and we appreciate you bringing those forward. This is a kind of a different event than others. You all have graciously attended a number of things that we've done, both at Luxever and at the airport. This one's definitely new for us of this type, and it's in close coordination with our airline, but it certainly is ripe for further discussion, and we're happy to go into more detail on that. But it's basically a community concert to try to drive people from Southern California to your airport. Number one, to make sure they know how to get to your airport, because many, you know, other areas of SoCal, I hate to say it, as much marketing as we do continually, don't all know that SPD is open for business. And so, that's something that the airline thought would be a good way to go, and, you know, they like doing things creatively as we do. So, I won't go into a lot more detail. Mr. Gibbs, any comments that you want to add to that? We can certainly discuss it as you move through your agenda further. Mark?
Yeah, thank you, Mike. And the intent of that is to really celebrate this major milestone while at the same time bring an awareness not only to the airport but also to Breeze Airways, our new partner at the airport. And one of the things we found successful over time, that's why the, one of the main reasons the airshow was established, so we can bring people down to the airport and let them see what's going on, start to become familiar with it. For years, we've been busy marketing the airport to aviation customers internally, but that's shifted. Now, we're heading to our customers outside of the airport to bring them down to your airport so they can experience it and really experience the world. But we found a good way to do that, we hope, which is, you know, through a multi-platinum artist with over 2 billion streams on Spotify. It's a group called Shade, and they've performed on Good Morning America, Jimmy Kimmel, Seth Meyers, Carson Daly, but part of the Dick Van Clark New Year's Eve Celebration with Ryan Seacrest. And their music was featured on Grey's Anatomy as well as Apple's debut of the MacBook Air. So, it's a pretty significant artist, and, you know, it's another layer for us to welcome people to your airport. And so, we wanted to share those important details with you as this starts to come into focus. It's heading out as pretty quick.
I'd just add, as I've discussed with some of you, you know, we would have very much wanted to have this in front of you sooner, but Breeze has a corporate headquarters that has to bless everything per our contracts and agreements with them. And regrettably, we did not get their corporate approval for use of the brand and participation and final sign-off until literally this week, in fact, you know, as I was finally sending out the weekly update. So, just some context on that, you know, we tend to want to get things to you as soon as possible, if not sooner. In this case, you know, our partners had a few other things going on, and it delayed the process. So, we can certainly discuss further, or if you want to, you know, pull from consent that makes.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend we pull from consent to discuss at that time item number five.
Sure. So done. Thank you very much, Supervisor.
All right. That then concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burrows. So, again, moving on now to commission consent items three through 11. Hold on. Thirteen, I'm sorry. Three to thirteen, with having item number five pulled for separate discussion in both.
Who are the ballots?
I have a motion by Mayor Valdivia and a second by Mayor Lilburn to approve and move the consent calendar items three through thirteen. Madam Kirk, would you please do the roll call vote?
Yes. So, we have a motion by Member Valdivia and a second by Member Lilburn to move items three, four, and six through thirteen of the consent calendar. Please state your votes for the record. Member Navarro.
Yes.
Member Rigsby.
Yes.
Member Rao.
Yes.
Member Lilburn.
Yes.
Member Valdivia.
Yes.
And Member Scherr.
Yes.
Okay. Those items pass unanimously. Thank you. And on to number five.
Thank you. Item number five, Supervisor Rao.
So, Mr. Burrows, my main concern is $50,000 for one hour seems like a tremendous amount of money that we're learning about after the fact to ratify. So, I know for me personally, I would have appreciated a heads-up. This is a condensed timeframe. I know you took it to the president of the commission for approval to put it on our agenda. I was really taken aback and caught off guard by this. I think that as we talk about bringing airlines in and what it takes to kick them off and to promote them, those are discussions that we probably should have had months prior to this, to say, this is traditional, this is not traditional, this is what other airports have done. So, not knowing that, and this being our first time, I know that it really was surprising to me. And then to read not only the 50,000, but their list of, I'll call them demands, if you will, that I will not read publicly because I'm not sure I would approve of all of them. And then lighting and stage things and just other things on top of the 50,000, it really was unfortunate that we learned about it when we're reading this agenda. So, I would ask in the future if you could, even if those things need to be ratified after the fact, if you could let us individually know that they're coming forward for us to find it on consent. When I was reading, it was just truly a little disappointing. And then now in discussion, I don't think many of us can even be there, that we didn't know about the date. So, I understand that it's a rapidly evolving thing, and you're doing a great job, and your team is, but it's too much money for one hour for me to support from our taxpayer perspective, but I do understand the need to promote the airport and the airline. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Appreciate that very much. And this is, you know, absent, you know, the circumstances, we will definitely be taking that into heart, and I don't see, I think you'll see another one like this. I do want to point out for the public as well, though, that the $50,000 expense is going to be offset by sponsorships. So, in your new budget, there is a revenue line that exceeds the 50,000, and some of the, what we'll call demand items, have actually been donated. So, that helps obviously alleviate the pain. But believe me, I don't like putting ratifications on. That's not my preference. But obviously, we've got some, you know, pretty strict orders with complying with the airline. So, thank you for your, you know, comments, and we certainly will take that forward.
With that, move for approval. Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Valdivia to approve item number five. Chair will entertain a second.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rigsby. Madam Kirk, if you would do the vote, please.
Yes. Please state your votes for the record.
Hold on just a second, please. Any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Thank you.
I do. I just want to say why I'm going to support this event, this item, is because I had a hard time digesting it today when I got the information. I needed to be talked off the ledge. I would appreciate a phone call, you know, just a heads-up, and you do a great job, but I understand this now. I just felt like our, maybe our chair was put in a compromising position, and so we're all transparent. But I understand it, and I understand our timeframe, so, but just a little transparency with us. Thanks.
Thank you for those comments. And just to kind of follow up on that, to clarify some of the air, and as I shared with some people, I was never pressured by Mr. Burrows. We discussed this over a period of two days, it was, and once I finally got all the information from him, I said, this is something that needs to happen in order for us to move what we want to accomplish here at the airport. So, again, thank you all for the support on this. And Supervisor Rao, I certainly respect your comments, and I appreciate your comments. And thank you for being the eyes on the paper. So, Madam Kirk, if you would please take the roll call vote.
Yes, thank you. We have a motion by Member Valdivia and a second by Member Rigsby to approve item number five. Members, please state your vote for the record. Member Navarro.
Yes.
Member Rigsby.
Yes.
Member Rao.
No.
Member Lilburn.
Yes.
Member Valdivia.
Yes.
And Member Scherr.
Yes.
Thank you. That item passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item I of the agenda, commission action items, item number 14, consider and discuss a report on annual business plan progress, and this is Mr. Burrows.
And I will be brief because our talented clerk of the board team, Ms. Rodriguez, has a nice surprise for you here. And this hopefully will be taken as good news. It's our annual look back at our calendar year progress for 2021. Jen, take it away.
Thank you, Mike. Let me adjust the mic. There you go. Good afternoon, commission members. Like Mike mentioned, I will be presenting the SEBIAS story map for calendar year 2021. Jen, if you can go to the next section. Thank you. So, comprised of the cities of Colton, Highland, Loma Linda, San Bernardino, and the county of San Bernardino, the San Bernardino International Airport Authority, or SEBIAS, was formed in 1992 to oversee the development and reuse of the aviation portions of the former Northern Air Force Base. Thank you, Jen. In 2020, a business plan update became effective to further focus on the SPD International Airport and Luxever SPD, or as we know it, the FBO. Most recently, it was updated in 2021. And if you would like to visit the business plan, the orange boxes direct you to the website for more information. Jen, next section, please. Replacing existing the 10,000 jobs lost when the base closed as of 2021, in partnership with the IBDA, over 17,000 jobs, direct jobs, have been created, generating over 3.6 billion in economic output. And for further information, you can visit our IBDA map. And the next section is our SPD International Airport. The airport is certificated by the FAA under Part 139 as a public commercial service airport. The airport supports air cargo, maintenance, repair, and overhaul, MROs, general aviation, commercial passenger charter, and soon passenger services. Thank you, Jen. Class-one airports serve large scheduled passenger air operations. Every three years, the FAA requires class-one airports to simulate a real-time emergency on the airport to test the airport's emergency plan and coordination with emergency response agencies. On February 25, 2021, the airport participated in a simulated real-time emergency on the airport. Next section, Jen. Air cargo, it's on everyone's mind. Air cargo is quickly growing at the airport. Air cargo growth at SPD continues to outpace the nation in year-over-year growth. In 2021, the landed weight of air cargo aircraft at SPD reached 872 million pounds, doubling from 2020. And our total annual aircraft activity in 2021 was a little over 49,000. It decreased from 2020 due to inactivity of SPD's flight school. And next, we enter our airport operations and business development section. Just want to give a shout-out to our ops team and Amber for these shots. In December 2019, the SEBIAS commission approved a long-term agreement with Hillwood for the development of an air cargo hub. The construction of the new air cargo hub is 100% privately funded. Currently, 2,500 employees at the air cargo hub. And continuing with air cargo, we have UPS. In November 2017, UPS began continuous operations. In 2020, the airline increased flight schedules and aircraft size-making, the SPD company's largest gateway in Southern California. And as we continue with FedEx, in 2018, FedEx began continuous operations at SPD. A new cargo-only airport entrance has contributed to the addition of a new FedEx ground facility. And next, we have our MROs. Thank you, Jen. Maintenance service companies continue to expand at SPD, providing a full range of MRO services. And then we have our UAS center at SPD. Established in 2020 by the IBDA, in partnership with the county fire district, the UAS center provides technology companies a location to conduct test flights. Currently, the majority of operations staff are fully certified drone pilots. And can I just add that the COB will be doing drone training next week? Next, we have our Good Neighbor Program. In an effort to keep the community informed, SPD launched the Good Neighbor Program in July 2020. And last year, the airport was awarded Best Overall Public Relations Program in the Small Airports category at the Airport's Council International North America Marketing and Communication to Awards Ceremony. That is very long, but Amber, thank you for representing us there. And next, we enter our airport infrastructure. Through funding from the FAA, EDA, and IBDA, the SEBIAS continues to improve airport infrastructure. The first project we will be covering is our City Creek Bypass Channel. In 2017, the SEBIAS began repairs to the City Creek Bypass Channel, which runs along the north portion of the airport. Last year, the agency received operations and water permits, and repair work has been completed and maintenance is ongoing. In the picture, there is during construction, and then we have afterwards. And next, we have our fuel farm expansion project. Last year, a contract was approved with Bodell Construction Company for the expansion of the existing jet fuel farm. It was completed last month, and we have during construction. The picture was thanks to Bodell. And then we have after. And then we move on to our IRP-2 landfill surface repairs and landfill entry gate project. Last year, the commission approved an agreement with Billson and Company to design the IRP-2 landfill surface repairs to preserve the integrity of the landfill cap, and another agreement was approved with AC Moreno Corporation to widen the landfill entry gate. The picture features the widening gate. So, that's before and after. And then we continue to our green energy element. As a component of the 2010 strategic plan, the airport began investing in a variety of green energy programs. Beginning in 2020, staff began a comprehensive update process to develop a new green energy element. As of April 2021, the airport advanced a new five-year program to further incorporate some of the latest in energy efficiency and green energy technologies. And next, we move to our beautiful Luxever SPD. Luxever welcomes corporate customers and general aviation pilots to enjoy one of the country's best FBOs. And as we continue down. Jen, can you click the graph for me, please, on filming opportunities? Thank you. SPD offers an excellent location for the film industry, most notable the popular TV series Flight Attendant filmed in 2021. And this is just a list of some of the filmings of last year. And next, we approach our last section of the story map, which is educational alliances. The SPD partners with a variety of schools within the community, and we also partner with the SBRETTC, which is the only facility in the Western US that provides airport firefighter training as required by the FAA. And that drone footage is thanks to our operations team. And then we enter World Right Wings. With 50 years of aviation training, Worldwide Wings continues to develop training programs that are safe and of high quality. And with that, I want to say thank you, commission, staff, and the public for being a part of a successful year, and we continue to look forward to working with every one of you.
So, that's a receiving file, but it's obviously ESRI story map technology, right, Jen?
Yes, it is.
And following their drone boot camp, clerk of the board will be representing us at ESRI's user conference down in San Diego. So, when I say they're multi-talented, they are multi-talented. And, you know, we're here to answer any questions, but that'll be with less than any other comments or changes, you know, updates and all that. It will be live on the website, and feel free to encourage your teams to get on there and review it.
Any comments or questions from commissioners inside? All right. Thank you very much. Good show. Good work. Thank you. That's a receiving file. We'll move on to item number 15. This is to approve the form of an employment agreement with Michael Burrows to serve in the capacity of chief executive officer. Mr. Scott Huber, if you would please, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is, I'm trying to scroll to that page here. This is the agreement for Mike Burrows to serve as executive director is coming to an expiration at the end of this month. This is continuing on with the same agreement, virtually identical terms. It does include a modest increase in pay. The contract includes a 3% per year increase, and so because those have taken place in the last two years, this would be a 7% increase, which does take into account those two previous increases. So, in, that's out to ballpark about a 1% increase when you take into account those two items. Again, we've discussed this in some detail, but the salary and benefits and the associated employer expenses are divided 50%, divided evenly 50/50 between SEBIAS and IBDA. The contract is the same, but each agency covers half of the expenses. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. This simply is rolling forward the contract that he currently has with some minor adjustments to that I mentioned.
Thank you. Any public comment, Madam?
No public comments.
Any comments or questions from commissioners at this time?
Move approval.
I have a move to approve from Councilmember Rigsby and a second from Mayor Valdivia.
And commissioners, if I can do just one little bit of housekeeping, I know this is, to comply with Government Code 1090, for the moment, Mike Burrows is not sitting here as your executive director. He's sitting here as a member of the public. I want to make sure we stay out of the hot water of the FPPC for a moment. So, that's, so again, that's why I'm presenting this item, because Mike, as your executive director, cannot present this to you on his own behalf.
Right. Thank you. Understand. You have something to say?
I just have one question. These pages, my pages are so misnumbered. So, I have the contract here. There was one thing in there I didn't know if it was a new item, that you, the executive director gets 10 administrative days. Is that an addition? Was that in there already from prior years, or is that something new?
No, that was in there previously.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Let's do the roll call vote, please.
Yes. So, we have a motion by Member Rigsby and a second by Member Valdivia. Members, please state your votes for the record. Member Navarro.
Yes.
Member Rigsby.
Yes.
Member Rao.
Yes.
Member Lilburn.
Yes.
Member Valdivia.
Yes.
And Member Scherr.
Yes.
Thank you. That item passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item number 16 on the agenda, and this is to approve a construction agreement with AEC Moreno Corporation for terminal parking lot trees and curb removal in an amount not to exceed 122,500. On this one, Mr. Jeff Burrows, if you would, please, sir.
Thank you. Approve of the construction agreement with AEC Moreno Corporation for terminal parking lot trees, curb removal, in an amount not to exceed 122,500, and authorize the chief executive officers to execute all related documents. Per SEBIAS policy and procedures, staff solicited pricing from qualified firms capable of completing the required work per code and within required timeframe. Four firms responded, AEC Moreno, Bo, Jurgensen, and Leonida Builders. AEC Corporation was the lowest qualified bidder, and staff recommends that the commission approves the above recommended action.
Any public comment on this, Madam Kirk?
There is no public comment.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Move approval.
Councilmember Rigsby moves for approval on item number 16. Chair will entertain a second. I have a second by Mayor Valdivia. I have a second by Mayor Valdivia. And Madam Clerk, please.
Yes, we have a motion by Member Rigsby and a second by Member Valdivia. Please state your votes for the record. Member Navarro.
Yes.
Member Rigsby.
Yes.
Member Rao.
Yes.
Member Lilburn.
Yes.
Member Valdivia.
Yes.
And Member Shret.
Yes.
Thank you. The item passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 17 on the agenda. This is to approve an agreement with Southern California Edison for electric vehicle charging infrastructure, charging infrastructure and rebate participation agreement. Presenting on this is Miriam Beltran. Please, Mary.
Thank you and good afternoon. I'd like to welcome a SEBI consultant and our author of the Green Energy Element, Mr. Michael Alouas. Michael has been actively involved with the supplemental of applications to Southern California Edison for potential rebates for our electronic vehicle charging stations. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mary. Good afternoon, Mr. President, Commissioners, Staff.
Turn your mic on. It's on.
Maybe I have to yell a little more. So some of you have already seen this, then, when you're a part of the IBDA. So I'm going to make this somewhat short, but some of you obviously haven't. This is tailored more for SEBI, and this is going to cover items 17 and 18 in my presentation, and you can take it from there. So today's, uh, presentation, um, is going to illustrate us moving forward with the Green Energy Element and adding the electric vehicle charging stations to this. And I'm briefly going to go through the, um, the SDE Make Ready Program, the charging station, locations and draft drawings, equipment and service providers, and the overall program, uh, cost to SEBI over a 10-year period. Next screen, please. Next screen. So, um, on, uh, on this item here, we're, on the Make Ready Program, uh, we've selected option five, um, and propose to utilize option one that will have SDE provide, uh, all the electrical stubouts for the different locations. Now, there's a total of six different locations, but four of which are for SEBI, SEBI locations. And, um, and so that's, uh, they're going to be providing, like I said, all of the, uh, the stubouts for this. Next slide. We've selected, obviously, the L2 is the faster charging station. We comply with the $2,900 per port rebate, which is, we're doing a lot of dual ports, that'll be double that, that will come back to us. And we're, since the reason why we can be able to get the $2,900 is because that's the maximum, and we're a disadvantaged, uh, community, so we comply to, to get that as well as we're not a Fortune 1,000 entity as well. Next slide. So we're currently in stage B5 of this chart here that Edison puts out, as well as C6. Uh, the, the signing of the agreement, which is, um, one of the items you're going to do with Edison, uh, which is the B5, and the C6, which is the Verdent Agreement, uh, is, which is, like I said, C6 to have, um, the charging station services and purchase orders as well. Next slide. Next slide. As I mentioned, this is, uh, the different locations for SEBI, the four different locations with a number of units. There's a total of 90 stations that are there, and, uh, uh, both dual and single, but mostly all dual. Next slide, please. This one here is, uh, the Commissary Building with, uh, 38 total charging ports. Next slide. Luxever, 24. This was originally, uh, going to be about, uh, 10 less, but then they increased this for capacity, and it worked out really well. Uh, when Edison does this, this is a side note, they have to go through a, a formal process for cost. If it goes over cost, it, they won't do the project. So, uh, and it worked out to our benefit by adding the extra spaces to this. Next slide. Uh, this is the landfill, which is the last one we just got about a week or so ago, uh, of the draft drawings. And these are eight charging ports in this location. Next slide. And, uh, the, um, domestic terminal has 20 ports to it, and this was a little challenging because we had some ADA issues that we had to deal with, and what they got that taken care of, and that's good to go. Next slide. So this is the 10-year agreement that you're going to be considering approval. And basically, this is a time-of-use agreement with Edison. And, um, it's, like I said, 10 years. There's a number of things that we have to take care of, such as reporting, uh, and maintenance of the, of the units. Uh, we have to provide a, um, purchasing agreement for the EV charging equipment, maintain the equipment for 10 years, grant an easement for 10 years for Edison, engage a third party to transmit the EV charging data to Edison, sign up for an Edison Time-of-Use Plan, which is this agreement, and have this body approve, the CEO, to have me go into the portal and say yes. And part of this is what it is, these are all in draft drawings right now in an Edison portal, and they've married this up with the agreement. So once you approve the agreement, you also approve the draft drawing, and then they take about two weeks to convert the draft into a permanent drawing, and then they slate it for construction. Next purchase, purchase, next slide. Um, and this is the rest of the terminology. If, uh, it's very painful to get out of this after 10, within the 10-year period, uh, because they've put all the infrastructure in to make this thing viable. Next slide. Uh, next slide. I'm trying to rapidly go through, you guys have a busy agenda today. Uh, so we've selected ChargePoint and Verdent. Um, ChargePoint is the maker of the equipment, and, uh, they, uh, they also provide some services, but they're going to go through a third party to, to implement everything. So the scope of work is providing all the charging units, installation, annual maintenance, network connections, pay all the taxes, shipping costs, receive, they're going to receive all the LCF credits, carbon credits, and they're going to receive the rebates directly from Edison. Next slide. So some additional benefits that, uh, the airport will receive. We're going to have revenue sharing after the first 10 years of the term, of the five-year term. It's going to be a 30% to 45% respectively. 15% availability of the advertising capacity on a 24/7 schedule, the plug, and a $25 allowance per the charging station. If you look on the very top, it says SPD on that little, uh, little picture there, uh, that's going to be our little branding, if you will, that we get to put onto there. Plus on there, there's a screen that they have advertisement, and we're going to get 15% of that content time for our marketing folks to go ahead and put something there if they choose to. Next slide. So the overall cost, next slide. If you, um, if you looked at this, uh, the, Edison won't give you the exact number, but it's about $200,000 per location, roughly, uh, some more, some less, to do all the infrastructure. And then the cost for the, um, for the units and things of that nature, it's about $250,000. So the overall cost is, uh, around $661,000 is projected and estimated that we would have to, uh, we would have to pay for just the units themselves. Next slide. So this is what it's going to cost SEBI. When we worked on the, uh, the Verdent contract, the whole process was that they were going to front the cost for everything, and they would collect all the credits, they would bill, uh, for the charge of electrons being used at the plug, and they would have their market to it. They would, uh, reimburse the airport for all the electricity used. And, uh, so again, the only out-of-pocket we're going to have is just the administration of paying the bill. So with that, that concludes my report. Be happy to, uh, take any questions.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Alouas, thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate your, uh, attention to detail, especially on, uh, emerging technology of this, of this aspect for our airport. My question stems from, um, more of access. So will these charge stations be also accessible for others to come?
Uh, or do they have to go through the parking, uh, gate to plug in and be assessed a fee? How, how is that handled?
Well, this is going to be different for each location. You have the commissary that doesn't have a gate, and you have the domestic terminal, which I'm not sure how you're going to handle the security on this.
Yeah, so that one would be having to come through the revenue control. That would be the only one of its kind at this point. The, the other facilities are open street-side to the, to the, uh, traveling public.
So three of the four charging stations will be accessible to anyone in the community? And we, will we be able to market that on various platforms? I, I would assume Verdent would want to take that role.
They, they absolutely want to participate with co-marketing, help get the word out. It helps them.
Sure.
As does Edison.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Well, I may want to add something to your marketing piece. Uh, Edison reached out to me and said that, uh, since the airport has about 135 of these going in at once, basically, uh, they want to showcase the airport, and so they want to do a commercial or spiff on the airport and put in these things in because it's a big deal for them.
What, what's the timeline on install, and when can we celebrate the?
That's the big question, uh. Where, I was told originally around September timeframe, they'll start doing the installation, but some folks at Edison said that's a little aggressive, so they thought maybe towards the, uh, end of the year or the first of the year. I have a funny feeling it'd be closer to September timeframe because they're already letting contracts out to do the infrastructure. And I was told it takes about two weeks to get the stubbing done.
What, what, what does a legal contract say? What?
There is no timing for that.
There is no timing.
You're at the mercy of Edison. They're paying the bill.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from Mr. Alouas? Nope. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this item, Madam Clerk?
No public comments.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion. I have a motion by Councilmember Shret.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rigsby to approve item number 17. Madam, Madam Clerk, please take the roll call vote.
Mr. Chair, a point of order. Is this item 17 and 18?
17 and 18, yes. I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion by Member Shret and a second by Member Rigsby to approve items 17 and 18. Members, please state your vote for the record. Member Navarro.
Yes.
Member Rigsby.
Yes.
Member Rao.
Yes.
Member Lilburn.
Yes.
Member Valdivia.
Yes.
And Member Shret.
Yes.
Thank you. The items pass unanimously.
Thank you. Thanks for that, Jen. Moving on to item number 19. This is to consider and adopt the San Bernardino International Airport Authority Budget and Related Airport Fee Schedule and the Luxi, Luxi Air SPD Pricing Policy for Fiscal Year 22, 23. Presenting on this is our Finance Director, Mark Cosenow. Mr. Cosenow.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we'll kick this right off. Uh, we'll start with a brief, uh, presentation of our structural, uh, budget. And with that, next slide, please. So we always take a conservative approach when we build our budget, trying to maintain our expenditures at the lower end, as well as, uh, uh, trying to identify all the revenue streams, but also being careful to, uh, make sure that we are not recording or, uh, estimating revenues, uh, before they come. So the timing of those is important, and we work on that as a team. There are unique economic and industry circumstances. Once again, we're closing out the pandemic, uh, ongoing supply chain, uh, we have labor issues within the air, airports, as well as within the airlines, and as well as the overall petroleum market is, uh, creating real difficulties in a fuel, uh, dependent, uh, uh, industry. Uh, we actively manage our resources and revenue, uh, as we go through the budget, and we will continue to provide the commission with, uh, Finance and Budget Committee Quarterly Budget to actual updates, as well as we, uh, prepare monthly budget to actual for management and distribute those to our department heads and those who need to know. Uh, with everything that's going on, with, uh, ramping up our airline, uh, support activities, we will be, uh, making some additional finance department involvement by making inquiries of our departments, uh, just simply when we start seeing line items, uh, moving in ways that we do not expect. Next slide, please. This is our budget structure. Uh, key to this is our intergovernmental revenues to resources. Uh, unfortunately, these are infrequent or limited to typically capital and not operational, uh, grants and revenues that we receive, but they are overall very important to us. Uh, they fund a large amount of our, uh, projects out on the airport, the airfield. Uh, we continue to expand and grow our lease revenues, as well as our other sources of revenue. Uh, bond and other debt proceeds will be less likely, uh, at least until we grow a little bit more in revenue. Uh, and, uh, we are probably at this point, after building our, uh, fuel farm expansion and paying off the older debt, near our debt capacity, and, but we do do a great deal of reliance on working capital from our fuel suppliers. Uh, those flow fund flows move into our property management fund, fixed base operator fund, which is Luxever, general fund, debt service fund, and capital projects fund. And so we both have inflows and outflows. Next slide. And here are our annual budget structure sources. Beginning resources are cash, is about $5.7 million. The general fund, uh, will be providing about $13.5 million. Property management, 12.1. Uh, capital projects fund is about $10.4 million. The majority of those sources will be expended on the airfields and the shoulder and, uh, taxiway shoulder improvement and then the joint seal, uh, runway projects. Our debt service this year is 1.2 million. Uh, we have about, uh, $100,000 that will be paid in December, and then the remaining balance, 1.1 million, will be paid in June. Uh, the FBO, as you can see, is by far the largest source of our revenues. That is from fuel sales, and that's approximately $122 million. Next slide. This is our general fund, uh, uses by activity. Each one of these lines represents a sub-fund or, uh, activity center within the general fund. Uh, I'm going to pay, uh, special attention to airfield operations, which is the second line, and then terminal and parking operations, which is about midway down. Those are two of the fastest-growing ones where we have the most activity, and that is due to the airline startup. So that is where we're also seeing growth in airport activity overall. Uh, the TSA security, uh, that will be important to the airport, but it also requires us higher additional personnel, as well as the passenger, uh, service startup. Are there any questions on the activity slide? Next slide, please. And in conclusion, we always look to be realistic revenue timing and amounts. Uh, everyone works very hard on the management team and the executive team to, uh, time those to where we think we're going to get them, uh, not be too aggressive. We, uh, apportioned for conservatively for our needs, uh, continue to manage our revenue cycle, and, uh, we will provide forthcoming budget updates. And with that, we'll go to the, uh, budget to actual for fiscal year 2021, 22 budget, and with the proposed 22, 23 proposed budget on that. And I'm going to start you out on page 257, the general fund. For fiscal year 21, 22, uh, as of 5/31 for all recorded transactions, we have favorable results, uh, to date. Revenues and transfers in at our, are at 104% of the fiscal year 2021, 22 adjusted budget, and expenses and transfers out at 73% of the fiscal year 21 to 22 adjusted budget. So essentially, our revenues and transfers ins are running ahead of our expenses and transfers out at this point in the fiscal year. With that, we'll move into the fiscal year 22, 23 proposed budget, as well as some commentary on, uh, the current budget. So once again, on page 257, you will note that there are, uh, several new revenue line items. Those are accounts 40310 through 40321, and they reflect new revenue streams that, from the terminal operation activity that will be arising from passenger service out at the related parking lots, as well as with activity within the terminal. Going to page 258. We'll go to the, uh, line that's salaries and wages, 5, 50000. Uh, we're looking at 975,000. We're looking at $975,000 increase in employee compensation, salaries, wages, and benefits included. These are primarily from new positions due to the ongoing growth in airport activity as well as in support of our passenger service at SPD. Other components that would be included in this increase include position adjustments and annual merit-based debt increases. Next account, 50015, which is airport law enforcement. Was a new line item that we added to adjusted budget last year. We have budgeted $250,000 at this point on the proposed budget to provide law enforcement services in the terminal, as well as provide law enforcement officer training in airport procedures. Our next line that is significant is account 50060, airline support operating expenses. That is $175,000. We will continue to carry that forward in support of passenger service. We are also anticipating some increases in account 50281, maintenance and repairs. That is about a $74,000 increase in anticipated activity, primarily from the increased use of the terminal. Account 50290, advertising, it's a $310,000 increase from the fiscal year 2122 adjusted budget. That is in support of achieving our objective of getting passenger service at SPD. Let's see. Account 50325, supplies, repairs, and maintenance. This is actually supplies for repairs and maintenance and parts, so on and so forth. We're looking at an $80,000 increase. Once again, we anticipate with increased use of the terminal that we're going to have increased maintenance and repair supplies, as well as parts and services. Account 50345, workers' compensation insurance. That's a $90,000 increase over last year. This is primarily due to the overall insurance market is increasing versus SPD's loss experience. Account 50410, electric. This is an increase of $275,000, and it is, we have increased it both for changes in rates and plans by Edison, but this also reflects the fact that we'll be operating the terminal at its full capacity. We currently run one or two HVAC units, and we'll be running six or seven going into the new year, once airline service starts in August, if not sooner. Account 50420, signage, a $24,000 increase over last year. This is to go ahead, continue to make SPD passenger-friendly for our airline service. On the good side, since we've been spending money, we'll save a little bit of money here. 50429, our vehicle, we're $0. That's the first time in a couple budget cycles that we haven't actually had to have significant outlays for our fire rescue vehicles. 50440, vehicle replacement. I'm sorry, I'm on page 260. A $70,000 increase, two new security vehicles plus other unfulfilled prior budget year replacement vehicles that were carried forward that we'll continue to try to fill as the auto vehicle and truck vehicle market allows us to. Account 50550, professional services, marketing. We're looking at a 40, almost a $40,000, excuse me, $41,000 increase to support SPD passenger service. And account 50570, professional services, special approach. This is a $70,000 increase to support a new approach for SPD that has been underway for at least a couple of years and pretty heavy in the last fiscal year, and we're going to continue to support that approach. UPS is one would be using that, as well as potentially others. And then finally, we're looking at account 50700, SBD cares. This is a new line item for $25,000 for services to be safe in SBD cares. And we finally go to page 261. We are moving account 52596, airfield striping from capital project fund to the general fund because it's a regular operational activity to maintain the repair and replace striping to ensure the safe operation of the airfield. With that, we'll go to page 262, property management fund. And this will be a little bit shorter than the general fund, fortunately for all of us. Favorable results to date as of 5/31 for all recorded transactions. Revenues and transfers in are at 83% of the adjusted fiscal year 2122 budget, while expenses and transfers out are at 79% of the fiscal year 2122 adjusted budget. So, performance is doing well in the property management fund and is expected to do so through the end of the fiscal year. For the fiscal year 2223 proposed budget, we're looking at a $946,000 increase from new leases, as well as from rent market adjustments for existing lease and license agreements. And that is account 41700, lease revenue. A couple of those new leases you've already seen and approved in prior meetings, Ashley Remote Parking and the Unical Expanded Ground Lease. Account 41710, common infrastructure assessment. We're looking to make sure we collect our $500,000 assessment to our tenants to support SPD storm and sanitary sewer systems, streets, roads, and other common or shared use infrastructure. And finally, on account 50336, we have lease expense. We're looking at a decrease of $115,000. That is primarily due from decreased or fewer broker commissions as we have completed most of those from the prior year into longer-term leases or re-signed. Going to page 264, capital project fund. Capital project fund as a 5/31. It's a portfolio of anticipated planned and ongoing capital projects. Revenues and transfers in exceeded expenditures and transfers out by $58,342. So, we're basically doing as expected in the capital project fund. Many of these projects create new long-lived assets or extend the life or production of existing assets, and because of that, they are capitalized and recognized as expense over their useful lives. Moving into the fiscal year 2223 proposed budget, we're looking at the page 264, account 41900, grant revenue FAA, and account 41915, federal grant other. These are two grants that we have been awarded for $6.4 million and $1 million. The $1 million is congressional grant, and our friends at the FAA have provided those both for us, or I should say, brought the $6.4 million and combined the $1 million together to fund our, two of our projects. We're looking forward to receiving $500,000 in anticipated Rialto Airport land sales. That is account 42101, land sale proceeds Rialto. As I mentioned above, we have two large projects underway that are federally funded. Account 52270, the FAA taxiway shoulder project is looking at $3,983,650 that is funded by the above federal grants that were mentioned, as well as SEBI, local match. Account 52559, FBO repairs. This is a new line item in the capital project fund that's placed there to exercise additional control over needed repairs to some of the facilities and furnishings or pertinences at the FBO. Account 52585, terminal improvements on page 265. That is $275,000 increase over last year's adjusted budget. That is primarily in support of the passenger service, and many of these projects will be capitalized and their expense recognized over their useful lives. And finally, account 52603, runway joint seal project. This is $3.8 million, once again funded by the federal grants. Moving to page 266, debt service fund. Not a lot to say here, other than that we've completed our debt service for this fiscal year. We funded the trust account with our trustee in June, as well as made the debt service, or the trustee made the debt service. So, that has been completed for fiscal year 2122. For fiscal year 2223, debt service, we have shown as being funded from the property management fund. As a keynote, all operating revenues of the SPD airport are pledged to the debt service. We have December and June payments, primarily interest is in December with the principal and additional interest due in June. The bond covenant does, or one of the bond covenants does require that operating revenues be 125% of operating expenses or greater. So, subsequent to adoption of the budget, finance will be recasting the budget in the generally accepted accounting principle format for submission of the operating budget as part of our continuing disclosure and our covenants. So, the important part of that, grants are considered non-operating revenue, and capital outlays, if capitalized, are not operating expenses, except to the extent that depreciation is recognized. And with that, we'll move to our final fund, which is Luxe Air SPD, which is our fixed base operator. That is on page 267. And results to date, we have revenues and transfers in are in at 73% of the fiscal year 2122 adjusted budget. Expenses and transfers out are currently at 78% as of 5/31 of the fiscal year 2122 adjusted budget. We are currently showing just slightly less than $36,000 of income and transfers in, in excess of the expenditures and transfers out. Expenses will be decreased by at least $834,000 through the capitalization of acquired long-lived assets that have, are recorded as expenses in our budget, and that would obviously add to the income in excess of expenditures by that amount. For the fiscal year 2223 proposed budget, we're on page 267. Account 42560, marketing reimbursement. This is a new line item. This is a $50,000 marketing payment per the terms of our agreement with our fuel supplier. Account 47000, fuel sales, and account 47005, cost of fuel. These are our large line items, $117 million, $116 million. Gives us an inventory margin on the purchase and sale of fuel of approximately $945,000, or about 0.81%. This is only part of the profits that are recognized from fuel sales. There are other line items, third-party into plane fees, which are significant, approximately $3 million, that are our greatest source of revenues for the airport. I would also point out that because of the large volume dollars in here, our fuel sales is the greatest source of our working capital. Finance estimates approximately $6 to $8 million at current prices. Essentially, that is an interest-free loan in the form of cash that we receive from our fuel supplier, and helps us weather fluctuations between our revenue inflows and expenditure Given the increase in fuel, one of the greatest threats that is unlikely to occur, but is still is a combination of rapid decline in petroleum costs and then just a bad timing on our part with cash flows and cash flows from either revenues or outflows from expenses. Moving, still on page 267, we have account 50000, salaries and wages. This is again a $540,000 increase, primarily due to new positions to meet increased business volume, which is primarily out on, actually in the fuel farm as well as in our refueler staff. 50284, on page 268, FBO equipment purchases. We're looking at a $540,000 decrease as we fulfilled a lot of our large ticket items last year. We still have a number of pieces of equipment that need to be purchased and/or replaced, and so that will, the balance of that will go towards that. Account 50285, leased equipment and vehicles. This $492,000 is a combination and consolidation of several other accounts, so lease payments can be better controlled and provide more meaningful information to its users. So, this account pays for five refuelers and two courtesy vehicles. And we have a five-year, six-year schedule of this that is available for the Finance and Budget Committee if it would like, or anyone else. And then finally, account 50410, electric. $12,000 increase, primarily due to rate and plan changes, as well as increased activity at the FBO. If you wish to view the standalone budget, proposed budget is on, are on pages 270 through 278. I am not going to further discuss that unless it's desired. The SEBI fiscal year 2223 airport fee schedule is on pages 279 through 281. Very few changes in there, increases or decreases, other than in badging fees, which we have increased to reflect the increased background checks that have to be performed to be a TSA security airport, as well as some changes in the commercial cargo parking, increase there based on tonnage of the aircraft. The Luxe Air SPD fiscal year 22223 pricing policy is available on pages 282 through 285. No real price changes there, other than in regulated waste, where we've seen some large activity occur there. We've come up with both a fixed cost and a variable fee based on the amount of waste that comes in. And I want a special thank you to our finance team, especially our Deputy Finance Director, Alka Chudusama, who did a great job of pulling this together in my absence, and everyone else on the finance team that supported her. And with that, that concludes my presentation report, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Cosenow, thank you very much for your report, very detailed. Supervisor Rowe has a question for you, I think it's regarding the FBO.
Just a quick question on 267. It's the second fund down under the income. It's 41100. What kind of equipment rental income do we rent that we receive income from? Just out of curiosity.
So, we have tugs, we have forklifts, and some other tow bars and some other items that would generate that revenue.
Do you say crowbars?
Towbars to attach to the plates, sorry.
Crowbars, yeah.
Crowbars we keep put away, sorry.
Keep those put away because you can break into a building with those.
Thank you very much. That's it for me.
Thank you. Thank you for your question, ma'am. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments.
I have a motion to approve by Mayor Valdivia, and I have a second by Councilmember Riggsby to approve FY 2122 to actual FY 2223 proposed budget. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. We have a motion by Member Valdivia and a second by Member Riggsby. Members, please state your vote for the record. Member Navarro?
Yes.
Member Riggsby?
Yes.
Member Rao?
Yes.
Member Lilburn?
Yes.
Member Valdivia?
Yes.
And Member Sharet?
Yes.
Thank you. Item passes unanimously.
Chair, I have another meeting, I believe. Okay. Mayor Valdivia is going to excuse himself. Please note that.
Mr. Chair.
Time of departure, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might. Backing up to item number 15, the employment agreement with Mr. Burrows.
Yes.
I was reminded that one of the requirements in a post-City of Bell world is that we have to disclose the term of the agreement and the amount of the agreement, which I thought were in the document. They were left blank because we needed to have some of those discussions. So, what I want to do at this point is just to comply to make So what I want to do at this point is just to comply, to make sure that we comply with the Brown Act. It is a two-year agreement. His current salary is $270,679.76. There will be a 7% increase to $289,627.34. And it is important to note for the public, this agency does not participate in CalPERS, so there is not a corresponding, you know, benefit rider that comes along with that that you would see in a number of other agencies, which is why those numbers are where they are.
And Mr. Chair, just to clarify, that we split his salary with IBDA.
Correct. That is the total salary, 50% SEBI, 50% IBDA. That number is the total.
It's a joint allocation from one to the other.
Yeah, but again, I was reminded of that, and I went, I said, well, it's in there. And then I went and looked, and I saw the blanks, and I thought, oh, that's right. We included the blanks, and so we could have that discussion, so.
Mr. McCollum, thank you very much. All right. We've got the vote, right?
Yes, we do.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item 20. This is to approve certain professional services contracts for fiscal year 2022-23. Mr. Coseno, you're on again.
Thank you. This one will be shorter, I promise. This is to approve certain professional services contracts for fiscal year 22-23 and authorize the chief executive officer to execute all related documents. These are continuing or new professional service providers that are billed on a time and effort basis and only at our request. And with that, we open this up to any questions, and that concludes my report.
Move approval.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve by Supervisor Rowe and a second by Councilmember Rigsby. Any public comment, Madam Clerk?
No public comments.
Thank you. No further comments. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please, for item 20.
We have a motion to approve by Member Rao and a second by Member Rigsby. Members, please state your vote for the record. Member Navarro?
Yes.
Member Rigsby?
Yes.
Member Rao?
Yes.
Member Lilburn?
Yes.
Member Valdivia?
Yes.
For the moment, and Member Shret?
Yes.
Thank you. That item passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 21. This is a review status of action plan for the San Bernardino International Airport Authority through June 30th, 2022. Mr. Burrows.
Thank you, commissioners, for your continued support in investing in our airport. I know this particularly last four months, we've asked a whole lot of you, including today, and we and our partners really appreciate continuing to move things onward. Your staff is extremely busy. We thought we were busy before, but I want to thank our team. I don't know when any of us sleep, but that's what coffee's for, right? So again, thank you for your support of the new budget. Obviously, it's getting bigger, and that's because of your continued support. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commission comment?
I just want to thank Mark and the entire budget team. It was a great presentation, and it's an awful lot of work, so thank you all.
And he did this while he was on the DL, recovering from illness. So yes, thank you, Mark.
And it was even better the second time through.
Right.
For those of us on the Budget Committee.
Right. It was more, a lot more clarity on it. Thank you, Mark. You did a great job.
And I want to thank our executive committee. We've leaned on you a lot in recent months, including today, so appreciate you making yourselves available. I know it's tough with all your other hats that you wear.
And you know what, Mike? Moving forward, because now we're getting deeper into the commercial service, let's maintain the executive ad hoc committee meetings before board meetings, okay?
We are happy to do it. It helps your staff greatly. Thank you.
Okay. No other comments or questions? There be no other business to attend to for SEBI?
Oh, for the record, no public comments.
I'm sorry?
No further public comments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned.